Pageant site manager, compensation, want to move that from the agenda. There's no need to act on it, there's no requirement for the act on it.
I'll make the motion.
So, so moved by Alderman Bell. Second by Alderman Barton. Any questions? Comments? No questions, comments, or in favor? All opposed? As have it, alright? Approve the agenda as it been amended, can get a motion on it. So moved by Alderman Brown. Second by Alderman Marsh to approve the agenda as it been amended. Any questions, comments? No questions, comments, or in favor? All opposed? As have it. Uh, an opportunity to look at the bills, the payment of the bills. Agenda item number five, the approval of the minutes. Minutes have been posted as per usual and we've afforded a copy of the minutes in your, uh, folder of the previous meeting. You have any questions or comments about the minutes? No questions or comments, or in favor? So the minutes. Get a motion rather. Correction, a motion to. So moved by Alderman Bell. Second by Alderman Barton to accept the, uh, minutes of the previous meeting, to adopt them, any questions, comments? No questions, comments, or in favor? All opposed? The carrot. Do you have the bills afforded to you? And one has a copy of the bills, have a chance to look at those, uh, bills, any questions about the bills?
Make the motion to pay the bills.
So moved by Alderman Marsh to pay the bills. Second by Alderman Turner. Any questions, comments? No questions, comments, or in favor? All opposed? Agenda item number eight, salary ordinance. Uh, zero four, two zero, two zero, uh, zero one, uh. Alright. Uh, turn the crew, it's gonna help us articulate that.
Absolutely, thank the mayor. Okay, so, um, this ordinance is a cleanup ordinance, does not enact anything new. It simply ratifies what is the current situation. And sets the salary for the mayor, the town clerk, and all the council members of the alderman. The mayor's salary is two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars per month, plus benefits and reimbursement allowed as per Louisiana law. Which is when driving for town business, uh, mileage reimbursement at fifty-eight cents a mile. Meals, uh, hotel stays if necessary, normal, um, normal reimbursement as necessary for town business, uh, as allowed by the law. The town clerk's salary is seven eighteen fifty an hour, plus benefits and reimbursement as approved. And the council members, four fifty a month, plus benefits and reimbursement. So what we need today, since this is an ordinance, again, this is an ordinance that needs to be passed every year. By this time for a budget, so that we can have this appropriately set for our budget. We need to introduce it, then we will have to have a public hearing, and it will be considered at the next month's meeting, so.
What was wrong with the other ordinance?
We don't have.
We don't have one.
We don't have one.
That's one of our compliance issues.
Okay, and, uh, the thing on, uh, pay for special meetings, extra meetings.
There's no provision for extra meetings, four fifty five a month.
No, so that is changed, why is that changed?
We can't find anything where it's different.
Okay, did you check with the state, cause I, 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 what I'm saying, I, I, I checked with the, uh, county, okay? They get three hundred dollars a month, okay? I'm talking about aldermen, I'm just using that, or it might be four hundred. And every special meeting was fifty dollars sent by the state. Fifty dollars for extra meeting, I'm just saying, I think we need to check into this before we go any further, okay?
I've been looking at the new stuff, I didn't see anywhere where it labeled how much for special meetings, but it did have a, 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 a notation there that the town could pay aldermen an extra amount of money, it doesn't say an amount. Now, that may be what the town was. I thought, I thought our salary was three hundred.
It is, I was using the county courts as an example. That they get, uh, sent by the state, fifty dollars for an extra meeting. I just, I, I didn't know if we checked into it, evidently we need to.
Well, we've, we've been talking about this for, for quite a while now. Back and forth with meetings, uh, and been questioning, challenged about it. Right now, we at the point now where we need to have these documentations in place in order to move forward with our budget. This is nothing new, uh, but it is mandatory. So to keep checking, to keep checking, if the state, if it's mandatory by the state, then we can't violate that anyway.
I don't see where it is.
No, it's not.
For instance, a B to Springs, the salary for alderman of the town shall be a sum of six hundred dollars per month. In the event of a special meeting is required, no additional compensation will be paid.
Yeah.
Here is Vidalia, a suggestion that Vidalia Alderman receive a hundred to a hundred fifty for special meetings, drew no support from the Alderman. So, they voted that down. So, I can't find where there is, I could be wrong, I'll research it. And that's absolutely something that we can address in the public hearing before final adoption of this ordinance. If we, if we want to present this through the normal ordinance, of course, we open it to a public hearing. Um, we publish it in newspaper, twice in newspaper as required by law, and then this wouldn't be considered for passage until it may be.
I'm just saying, I've been here twenty-six years, and we always got half hour salary for a special meeting. And I think even since Ted, Ted was in there, the same thing. You know, and I'm just wondering, we've been doing this for forty years, and all of a sudden, what happened to the extra pay for the special meeting? I know you only get one, you know, you could have ten special meetings, and you're only gonna get paid half.
That's my question, I'm just saying, what is this?
You got ten meetings, you only one, one a month you get paid.
What you're changing here is you're making it a four fifty baseline, as long as you have a special meeting.
Right, right.
So actually, we'd be like this other town we're talking about, we wouldn't get anything for special.
Right, it's all included.
But Kirk, you said that some towns got that in place, they made an ordinance to get paid last week. That's what we doing now, we just can't keep what we doing?
There's nothing documented, we can't find any documentation.
Can't we put that in the special meetings? Cause I said, I'm not gonna vote for, uh, any kind of upgrades, I can say that right now, I'm not.
It's not an upgrade.
No, I mean, I want it to be a special meeting that we do something to get this extra. I, I don't.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. If we got the four fifty regardless, if we have special meetings for six months, we still will be getting four fifty, which is, we getting a pay raise. Because you wouldn't have got that if you grew up on special meetings.
It's not a pay raise, we'll be clear on that, it's not a pay raise, it's just being consistent in your payment. If you go back and look at all of your, um, your audits, and they are posted, you'll see that that total amount does not, has not changed for quite a while.
And I know we had the ordinance, because I, I'm the one who voted against it, when I came in here, it was two hundred dollars, I'm gonna tell you what it was. Two hundred dollars, they made a motion to go to three hundred, I voted against it, cause I said, I'm not voting for any pay raise, I'm not in here for, for the money. And so I voted against it, I'm gonna vote against it, and I'm still gonna vote against anything that's going up, but anyway, that's me personally. And, you know, uh, it wa, it was passed, I don't know why we can't find it.
Wait, wait, hold, hold, wait, 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 we keep going back to this, why we can't find it? Come on, you've been here, like you said, twenty-four, whatever years. Records, that we have documentation from employees and former employees, the reason why, records of the allegation of why the records are missing. We cannot find the record, we're here to put something on the record, that's what we're here for. If you, if you had it, where is?
Yeah, yeah, we need to do this, you saying that we can't go forward.
Everybody's talking about, you know, the people that are doing some paperwork. Like in the last administration, you know that? That's why they can't find a whole lot of documentation now.
Right.
The people in the last administration, burning stuff, burying stuff, let's get it on, let's get it on the floor right now.
Yeah, I mean, everybody knows that.
Everybody knows that, so we know we can't find it, so we ain't got nothing to document.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm saying that I know it was passed, it was passed, so why can't we just do it again?
It may have been passed, but we do not have the record, we keep coming back to the same thing. All of our problems that we, most of, ninety percent of our problems we've been having is because of things that are, that are missing, that are not in place. And for what reason, well, it's still under investigation. But to, to sit here to the general public and start talking about a raise, this is not about a raise, this, these numbers will not change. These are the same numbers, whether you do one fifty, three hundred, it still comes to the same number as four fifty.
If you go back to what was actually paid, at least over the last three years.
Yes.
Council members have received a four hundred dollar.
Doesn't change.
Now, whether or not that's three hundred, again, Koda, I don't have any reason not to believe you, you were here all of it.
Yeah, it's not forced to that.
If it was said at three hundred, and then one fifty for a special meeting, or two or three, or whatever special meeting, I'm, I have no doubt that that, you're right. Fact of the matter is, I can't find documentation. Like, I can't find documentation.
I'm just saying, personally, I voted against that anyway, the three hundred dollars, it was passed, but I'm just saying.
And look, right now, this is a draft, this is a draft ordinance, that's why we're here, we're in a deliberative process, it's for you guys to decide, I'm not here to tell you what it is. I'm here to tell you that when you take the yearly salary of what the Alderman get paid, and divide that by twelve, it averages four hundred and fifty dollars a month. So for simplicity's sake, and to make it easier across the board, we're gonna do away with nickel and diming for this, that, and the other, and just say it's a flat rate. It's four fifty, it's what everybody's getting right now, that, that's how come this was put in here. But I work for you, if you wanted it three hundred, and then one fifty for a special meeting, I'm happy to word this. I've been, but I mean, that, that's, that's part of the vote of this vote, you tell me how you want it, I'll word it as such, cause either of them work.
I understand what you're saying, Kirk, because since November, when y'all appointed me, we've only been one month without a special meeting, so. I can understand where we come out though, average four fifty, I see where you're coming from, so.
And I'll bet before you come up for election, we're gonna have two special meetings in a month.
I'm sure.
So.
With all this going on.
I mean, that, that's why we put this in here, that way.
The most, the most recent records, we cannot find them, the questions of why, the jurors give out on that. But we have found, those that we have found from two thousand and one, two thousand and four, and five, in two thousand and one, if my, my recollection is accurate. Now, we're thirteen special meetings in two thousand and nine. And two thousand and four is pretty much consistent, so that's always, you've, you've always gotten the same amount. At some point or another, y'all talk about a raise, nobody questioning whether you're telling the truth or not, that's not even a question. The question, the, the, the real issue is, we do not have the documentation, we gotta put documentation in place to go forward. That's with our audit, with our budget, you cannot submit this budget, or we're gonna have some serious. Have these simple documentation in place.
So, the mayor mentions the audit. The ordinance we submitted with your salaries for last year, the budget that you adopted as ordinance for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, cal, uh, fiscal year. And that amount was four hundred and fifty dollars a month. Because took into consideration what's passed amounts. Difference is, we didn't spell it out as four hundred and fifty dollars a month, we spelled it out as a yearly total, and it was included on the last page of the budget that you adopted last year. Being, so this has been, this was adopted.
We already adopted it.
It's just to be in compliance.
Right.
We have to cross the Ts and dot the Is, so we've been requested to consider individual ordinance that sets these salaries, and to consider this yearly.
Right.
Moving forward, not simply, oh, put it in the budget. And so that's all this is. This is cleanup ordinance, this is something that's happening already, this is something you've adopted already. And we have to clean it up and put in a concise form, so it's more readily available and accessible. And how you wanna word it?
The last, the last few, uh, uh, audit, it's, it's in there, uh, and it's already adopted. This is just an individual item that we have to act upon, it's already adopted, you made the motion, and my memory is certainly right, to adopt the budget.
Adopt the budget?
Yeah, but this is, this is in the budget.
Yeah, but this is a separate audit.
It, it is a separate.
It's separate.
It's a separate ordinance that just specifies per month that this is what.
Yeah, but how we, we adopted it, we'll get three hundred dollars and a hundred fifty for a special meeting. Why don't we just keep it like that?
If you want me to word it like that, I'm happy to.
Then you're gonna run into a consistent problem, that's part of what's causing the problem now. You, you have the general public thinking that you're getting paid for, uh, every special meeting, and that is not the case. So in lieu of wasting time, precious time, trying to explain things, of course, you all don't sit here and explain this, you all don't sit here and respond to these particular requests. You hear about them, I tell you about them, I keep you posted on them.
They come and check up all the time, especially me.
So, when I'm talking about professional response to them.
Why y'all have a special meeting there?
Well, and, and, and you're gonna have gossip, I'm talking about a professional response to them, you clear that matter up as well. It's, it's no raise, nobody's getting a raise, so, take that, I see the question. This is money that we already adopted in our last one. It's just an individual item, and you wanna continue to have that conversation? Hey, vote.
And, and again, like I said, this is, this is a proposed budget, and ultimately, you guys are here to tell me how you want it.
And you got, you, you're gonna have a hearing on it anyway, but at the same time, if, if that's where you feel, then vote on it, that's why we vote. We don't have to always agree, but we have to always do this the right way.
Myself, I can keep it like we had before.
Three hundred a month and one fifty for a special meeting?
I don't, that's not, that's not my proposal to court.
I should just put it to a vote, I'll make a motion to accept it as it is.
Except what as it is.
The, the proposal for the, uh, ordinance.
The proposal is presented.
Yes, alright.
So moved by Alderman Barton. Second by Alderman Brown. All in favor, I mean Alderman Bell, I'm sorry, the correction for the record, uh, second by Alderman Bell, all in favor, aye? All opposed?
Nay.
Two nays, let the record reflect, Alderman Bell, and Alderman Brown, approve, Alderman Turner, and Alderman Marsh disapprove. For, is for the record, nays, for Alderman Turner, and for Alderman Marsh for correction, and yea for Alderman Bell, Alderman Barton, and Alderman Brown. And so the motion passed.
Mayor, just so that, uh, we're clear, that motion was to present this ordinance.
Right.
So we also need to schedule a public hearing associated with this, because it won't come for final approval until after that public hearing.
Right, so the public hearing, we can go ahead and set the public hearing, uh, for, what's the next count of the date there, make sure we, uh, move past the, make sure we clear the thirty days, is it thirty days?
Yes, thirty days.
Make sure we clear the thirty days.
Next meeting?
May eleventh.
May eleventh, so that's not, that's not gonna put us, that's not gonna do it.
Twenty-eight days.
Twenty-eight days, so we gotta make sure we clear it.
Yeah, twenty-eight to the eleventh, so you'd have to set it either.
Following, uh, following Monday.
The eighteenth, yeah.
As long as we clear it, I'm fine with it.
The eighteenth, the question would be, is if you wanna hold that separate, or if you wanna move the council meeting to the eighteenth. Or the eighteenth's gonna be the special meeting, a special meeting to consider.
We, we got that most of the floor to set this for, for the eighteenth, or is it part of the same?
It's gonna be y'all voting the same, because it has to happen.
The eighteenth, the next month?
The third Monday, we gonna have a meeting, we not gonna have it the second, we have it the third Monday, for that.
Correct.
So as part of this, we'll schedule, um, May eighteenth as the, what do we know, we said at five thirty? Five thirty P M?
When is that?
Public hearing at five thirty, and so you're saying reschedule, what's, the eighteenth of Monday?
Of this month?
May. And so we're gonna reschedule regular meeting from the eleventh to the eighteenth, and this will be on the.
There's no holiday, okay, no.
No, thanks, yeah. I'm not legal holidays, so.
Alright, so except for the eighteenth, uh, the council meeting, moving the council, the regular scheduled council meeting, uh, to the eighteenth.
Be the third Monday.
Third Monday, and, and instead of the, uh, second Monday, for the record, for May. Alright, what's that date, give me that date.
May eighteenth.
No, no, the, the one before that.
May eleventh.
So we're moving it from maybe eleven till May eighteenth, the hearing, for clarity, would be at five thirty, the regular meeting was starting at, uh, six o'clock.
And we'll make the appropriate announcements and everything, so that the public's aware.
Alright. We satisfied the thing, attorney, with that?
Yes, sir, I'll give you the finalized copy, and we'll make the publication as appropriate as well.
Salary, I mean, as you were, agenda, uh, moving on to the next thing, department reports, uh, due to our practicing, our social distances, and appreciate that. The, uh, reports were basically given to us, um, we had nothing from Mr. Jeremy. My, my, that is, the, uh, from the utility and street, the utility department, uh, the sewer plant, and the street department, let me just go ahead, because they sort of intertwined. The, they've been working on quite a few leaks, of course, y'all are aware of that, um, quite a few, probably more than we would appreciate. Uh, they sort of got them under control, uh, and sort of moving forward to, um, the, um, clearing up some, uh, some of the readings there, from the transition, from the manual to the electronic meters, uh, meters that is. It's sort of clearing up some of the issues there, so it's a slow process, but they're well on their way with them. Uh, the sewer plant, uh, Mr. Carter, quite a bit going on there at the sewer plant, we had a little, uh, I would say inspections, and a little overview of the operation of the sewer plant. It's, it's, it's an old plant, he's basically piecing it together, uh, and from what those who looked at it from a professional perspective, he done a, a good job, that was good to hear that. And so he has his challenges, but he's done a pretty good job keeping, a good job keeping that, uh, old plant together, so hopefully, we'll be able to get some help real soon. Let me just leave that bad without, uh, throwing, you know, anything out there that, uh, probably would be unclear. Uh, had some little machinery issues, but he sort of resolved that, uh, Alderman Turner talked about the, um, mentioned about the.
Generator.
Generator, uh, he said, uh, the generator's still down on well number one, uh, which is on the corner of Cooper and Brown Street, well number one. He had someone to, I'm scared to come and look at it, but due to what has happened, uh, they haven't come on site to actually look at that generator, but keep that, keep me in mind that, uh, Alderman Turner. So I could still.
How long has that been out?
It's been out a while.
That's something we should have looked at, I mean, should have been looked at before.
Yeah. It's been out a while. Uh, um, we thought we had a replacement with that big green generator, you remember was over here, but the connection is not the same, so. You know, maybe it should have been discovered earlier, but it's almost like anything, when you need it, then you find out whether it works or not.
Can that big, can that green generator be put on well number two? In case we can't use well number one, we still have oil?
Yeah, I'll ask him about that, I'm not sure, so I don't wanna give you just an answer, just the answer. In May, but I'm thinking that the connections are probably the same, I, I don't know that, but, but I, that's a good question.
Once the issue right behind, needs to be done to transfer.
He said the ampage was a problem. The ampage was a problem, so that's a huge generator. I'm not sure, he would have to. I'll get a question, and I'll pass that information on to y'all. Alright, the, um, street department, they, uh, done some, did some, uh, patching of holes. We, we still in the patching business until we get the funds to actually, to, to do better. We do have some limbs to pick up, uh, all over town.
You ever run the truck there?
No, they still have fixed the truck. They need to look at it.
I was down one day, Carter was looking at it, but I don't know if you actually, I might as well say he don't know what he's doing, but he might take somebody.
Somebody else to look at.
With the still on, and then they left off and out.
Yeah, with the dump truck?
Yeah. Or nothing else, pull the stuff off with the truck, or pull it off and go get some more. We can't dump it, we can pull it off.
Yeah, well, we got quite a bit around town.
Yeah.
We do have a date set to do limbs, we kind of missed it last week because of all the leaks, I mean, we really had more leaks than we could handle than last week. Most of it was due to the installation of the new meters, and it was on outside, so, uh, they kind of caught up with that. The, um, the big man is, uh, Mr. Smith, is, has been training on the, uh, track hole and back hole, look like he's coming on, pretty good, Smith. So look like he's coming on pretty good, uh, so we've been working on, on that, um, you know that.
You don't run that overnight.
You, you don't, no, you don't run that overnight, so he's, he's been going pretty good, so I have to applaud that, have to applaud that. Alright, the fire department, you didn't give anything on the fire department, you all have anything that you, well?
No, we, we didn't even have a meeting because of this, I mean, our meeting's been, we just paying the bills by phone, and.
Are we getting quite a few calls?
Got a few calls, we got a couple, uh, last night, somebody hit the deer, and, uh, laceration by the beard, and, but.
A lot of medical calls.
Yeah.
We never, haven't had the, uh, helicopter in town recently, huh? Alright, we're good. Um, I know they've been working on that body there, if y'all noticed.
Yeah, it looks good.
Yeah, and then the tire sprayed it, and where we came to reach and spray it, that was a part of one of the.
At least they fixed that leak too, what you told them about, about, uh.
Oh, yeah, that, what they, the big leak on, uh, Riverside.
It looks, it looked good.
They did a good job with that, and, uh, took them a while, that's why we, we need that equipment, and finally detected where the cutoff was, and of course, it's on the other end of the street.
And come back to dump trucks, I think, I had showed you in pictures of dump trucks, and sooner or later, it's gonna come in for that.
We're gonna have to get it somehow, so, uh.
I mean, most of the town's bill flat checked in too, and, and Mark's goes, got one, you know, automatic junk, you put it behind your truck?
Your trailer.
Trail, yeah, and the trailer just dumps.
Yeah, also the little, the little thing you can pull behind it, that sort of shriv the limbs.
Yeah, we had one of those one time.
We get out and go.
Alright, so the police department, they took, uh, with the, uh, police commissioner, Alderman Bell.
He said, Damon talked, I talked to Damon, and he said everything was going to go.
Oh, they Saturday went out there, I had the first time in seven days, I left the house, every store. The dollar store, the pig, the the shell, Thomas, they were packed. And the people were outside sitting on their vehicles, drinking cold drinks and la bae. I got two calls that same day from people in in the back back there, they know I'm the alderman, I'm one alderman now. One of them saying that they were scared they go file for break. Because the people won't leave the the stores, so I called the mayor, so, because the cops.
Jamie came and he stopped by my house over there, I mean, they were happy, they were happy to get together with you, it was a party and stuff, and the other night was still three o'clock. You know, boom, boom, till three o'clock and my bed's on that side and stuff, and they were not aware of that the night before, but yes. Day before yesterday, whatever it was, it was last night, they had a birthday party, I don't mind, they had a birthday party and you got eight or ten. And you stop at ten, uh you know, nine o'clock, but stuff going on till three o'clock in the morning, I'm too old for that.
Well, I mean, people, they, the two that called me were scared to go in the store because they said there were so many people hanging out outside the stores. That that they they didn't feel comfortable even going shopping, you know what I'm saying, to get what they need. I called you about it, I told you, I mean, it's every place when I passed each town, it was packed. And it wasn't just their shopping, they were outside sitting on their vehicles, la bae. I mean, we not even, they're not even regulating how many people can go in a store. The dollar store, I sat out in the parking lot for hour and thirty minutes one day, just waiting for it to thin out. And not that I'm worried about that, I know I'm going.
They do have markers on the on the the floor. Obviously, they stayed so far apart, they do have that.
It's hard to stay apart when you got forty-five, fifty people in the dollar store room.
Alright, the uh. Anything else on the bill, police department? They did get the. Some personal protection from uh prepared readiness, a home and security from Julie, so thank God for that. Mr. McCord, town magistrate, town attorney.
So we have. We canceled magistrate court for the month of March. That was after Louisiana Supreme Court issued their orders. Changing the way the court process is being done. Um right now, since the governor's proclamation extends to the end of April. We will likely be canceling a court for April as well. Excuse me, we um, we simply don't have the audio visual equipment that we would need to conduct the court. And uh it's probably in everyone's best interest that we don't bring a big group of people in here, so I'll be issuing an order. From the court, very, very busy, um. Answering various different complaints and requests from the Attorney General's office, D A's office. Every other uh office, but uh more importantly, the mayor issued a proclamation declaring a state of emergency. That uh terminates tomorrow, so we will be drafting extensions for that, so that we can extend that through. The end of this month as well, so uh that's all I have.
Now, so the governor, did they, did they pay it out of no school cut out remaining here? The governor, no school remaining here.
What we, what do, do we need to do anything different for the extending?
Another document, we'll do the exact same thing.
Would that be another fee?
Probably so, probably a fine be.
Yeah, because it expires.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, only lasted long, huh?
Well, we had, we had written to, to last until the end of the governor's proclamation, April thirteenth. From the previous, uh since we've made this proclamation, governor has since extended his proclamation. And so to ensure that we would extend.
And that's why I asked, um would there be another fee?
I'm not sure if that'd be a clerk of court question, because it's it's, the fee is the clerk of court's fee. For filing, it's not, it has nothing to do with the situation with. It's um, it's it's the clerk report's filing fee.
Well, for the record, the, what was it, a hundred and thirty-five dollars, plus ten dollars per copy.
Per copy.
Filing fee for the uh emergency plan that we put in place.
The thing is, it has to be filed, so that there's a document, there's a record of it, I mean, it's it's all part of the process.
Right, anything else, Tony?
No, sir, unless anybody has any questions.
That's a good question. Will we get reimbursed for that?
Okay, so so since, since we're only, I would reimburse. Part of this proclamation is declaration of emergency. So that everyone understands what that does, it allows the parish. It's the town saying, look, we don't have all the resources that we need to take care of what we anticipate to be an emergency. That's gonna affect the public, so what we're doing as a sovereign, or not sovereign, but as a. In independent public entity of the state, we're granting authority. To the police jury and to the state to come in and assist and provide funds and resources and things of that nature. Now, this is just a protective measure, because the parish has entered into a joint emergency management plan with the police jury. So we're included in that, and parish has also declared an emergency, allowing the state to uh send resources here. And since the state has declared an emergency, allows the federal government to to come in and assist and bring resources. So what we have to do is follow all of FEMA regulations, because it's a federal emergency management agency that regulates. Money and resources and things like that, that and health and human services, that would come into the parish, and of course, Louisiana Department of Health. Down and down, there are specific forms that you have to use to track your expenses associated with the disaster. To apply for reimbursement when those funds come back. So uh my suggestion would be to coordinate with Joey Franks, through the Office of Emergency Repairness. Because I'm sure they're gonna be compiling all of that, make sure that they have all of our receipts, all of our expenses associated with any of those funds.
Yeah, because didn't the president just pass uh making a state of emergency for the whole country today?
Uh I didn't see anything today, but essentially, yeah, it's a, uh he he's declared a state of emergency, and what that does. That allows access to additional federal funds uh that are not a standard budget, and allows for additional powers to allocate resources. A lot of things go into it, but it's primarily an allocation of resources that uh that this gives access to. And of course, everyone knows resources mean money.
Anything else? That's it, alright. Tom Clerk, administration.
It's just, we still in busy, I mean, I've been here every day, myself, every day. Been working the front office, my office. Still collecting water bills, gas bills.
People actually, how are they gonna get a receipt?
Receipts are being mailed out also.
Okay, because I was, I haven't got mine yet.
Receipt, I'm by myself, so I just need people to bear with me.
That's another question I had, do you want me to wait for that, or tell my public, you too?
Yeah, you can, you can. What else you have?
That's it, we're manning the phone, and I just want people to understand, it's a, if we can't get to your phone. Because while we're on the phone taking a payment over the phone, we can't answer the other line, be finished. So we are trying the best that we can to get everybody.
And that's where the phones are regulated, it's not our choice, it's just the way, the new system that we have is regulated, of course, we probably still learning it as well. But it's been pretty consistent. Pretty consistent, also, we, to add to what you, we um started getting the B O T. Um regular payments for keeping up everyone and. Tobacco and. Video poker, uh we started back getting that, so that's, that's real good to do. Anything else from your office? I think at some point, probably tomorrow, we get together and uh revisit the employees' status. There's so much out there, we have to filter through, revisit their status, uh we had two on quarantine. And uh at least two, two. Um we'll, we'll revisit them and revisit their status as well, and uh I'll send you an update on that. Alright, thank you. Council report, order number one.
Well, with everything going on, I guess they're doing everything they're able to do, so I have that no plan, but.
Alright, thank you, two, district two?
Yeah, it's uh basically the same, uh you know, I I noticed the emergency and stuff, so. Uh like I said, they fixed that water leak, I mean, that was a big.
That was a big.
And you know, it's been like that for a while, so I was glad it, and then it looks good, and over here by the fire, it looks good, like I said, they spraying. Everything, I mean, you can only do something like limited access right now.
Yeah, uh it's it's a very small crew, yeah. Alright, anything else? Alright, I haven't, by the way, heard anything on the block project. You have? Uh three, district three.
Everything is fine, but I would like to see. The town stay like it is under the lockdown, you know, for right now. I I wouldn't like it to go back to what it was, you know, for right now, because it's gonna spread. And that's all I'm asking, is that we stay not having all of these cookouts and parties and all of this right now.
I agree. So in 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 clarity, ours is, though we. We're partnering with the parish, we wanna get on the same page with the parish, and I I'll make uh uh mention of that there shortly. But I agree that we need to stay with what we have, for the most part, it's working, and we we're gonna have those who. Just wanna obey the law, uh and then that's where the law, you apply the law.
I mean, you're kind of scared too, that they might take everything to me, you know, like, somebody went to Walmart yesterday, said, can't act like this. You know, and it's just, everybody's, all of a sudden now, they they feeling a little more confident, so they all wanna get out. Yes, definitely.
So we need the general public to help us. This is, we're, we're, we're not.
We fortunately, we had one death in the fall, let's let's not have none from now on, too.
But this is nothing that we're doing for fun. This this is for the safety and for the betterment of us all, so we really need the general public to help us. To keep our social distances, the the washing hands, all the C P C uh mandates or requirements. Let's practice that, and let's respect those who uh are practicing if if you choose not to.
Actually, we received an F grade last week, uh uh clients. The most person's got an F. New Orleans got an A minus, we got an F, that's sad. What's it take, the hundreds of people to die from these scare, for us?
So we we need that help and we all do the best you can and uh convey the message, and I know that you are. But uh hopefully, we all live this together, and we pray in God we get past this. And and it becomes an eye opener. We can think better and clearer on the other side of this, alright, the district number four.
Yeah, good thing, good thing about the same, but I wanna condemn or commend them dudes on. Coming out there doing what these can do to get the water pressure back up down there for the people down there to get it all they can. Came out there with the good show, man, that they did, I wanna commend them for what they did. But like I said, it was COVID nineteen, got everybody locked down, so they doing what they can.
At large, Mr. Baldwin, all of you Baldwin.
I already told you what the deal was with the store, but other than that. The police officers are, I guess, are doing what they can, you know. Like Coach said, they handle the issue with the parties and stuff, it's just, they didn't realize it's a hell.
Well, it's like what the mayor said, you know, the people have to help out.
They got hundreds of thousands of people dying over there right now, and it's starting to get. Through social media and stuff over there, because so many people sick, they can't keep up with it, and it's getting out. And the second wave they hitting right now is knocking them in the dirt, and I mean, it's, Italy is trying to be safe. But we come right behind you, you know what I'm saying, so the people have got to, they got to fall behind with it, I mean, I'm all about my civil rights. But uh when it comes to people dying, I got a lady in my congregation right now, that's cleaning up the ball hospital, she's done. And uh we can't even visit, you know what I'm saying, can't even go visit.
I know, we continue to pray for one another.
Oh yeah, that's the thing, you know, you just gotta stick together and 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 not let it just come between us, but we don't wanna end up with a situation like this, it's a cold.
Man, didn't I mention it to you before, when we got out of curfew hours, that was it possible that we could have put some curfew hours on the stores? If you shut the stores down at a certain time. Or night, well then you would stop all the time.
That's another man.
Well, and and other than, most of them have modified their schedule. And uh complying.
Don't try to practice no uh uh social distance, it ain't no social distance in there. You wallow in wallow.
But if if you can get them to close the door, then you'll stop all the time. And we lived like that for a long time, that's when we was kids, when they rolled the side, the sidewalk got rolled up at five o'clock.
I don't wanna pick on any one business or the other, uh most of the businesses have been pretty proactive, they they actually. When this thing first started, they actually came out, a call, and they're doing the best they can as well. And they have to deal with the general public, remember, they're business uh people, they're they're entrepreneurs, or what have you, they're not law enforcers. Uh and sometimes they get caught in situations like we do, in between abiding by the law and trying to enforce the law, that's not necessarily what. Uh our profession is, having said that, the uh, I'm sorry.
I don't know who did the calling, but. Uh or who wired up at the dollar store, but thank y'all if you did the call and made the call to whoever they they answered to over there, because. They were talking about shutting down for three, four days for remodeling, but they changed their minds on that pretty quick, and that would hurt a lot of people around here.
They're making some serious adjustments.
A lot of people, I mean, they depend on the dollar store, because they don't wanna go to Walmart.
So the, and thank you, uh each councilman and gorge uh for your input and concern for your districts. Having said that, the uh, just a few notes that uh we uh we have consistent. Phone conferences with the uh state rep. Uh Mr. Disatell and with uh prepared readiness with Joey Franks and. Uh with the police juror. State rep, uh, Mr. Disatell, and with, uh, prepared readiness, with, uh, Joey Frank, and, uh, with the police juror. And, uh, the mayors and quite a few others, the DA, uh, Mr. Roy, Privy Roy, President of the Juror. And our, our district rep, uh, Alderman Coco as well, um, and they give some good inputs, we sharing one with the other to see how we can. Stay on the same page across the parish, and, uh, glean from one another. We sort of all have the same problem, we just in different spots and places of the parish, as well as the state. So, uh, I just wanted to know, we do have a ongoing dialogue, we had a conference call, uh, as late as, early as, uh, this morning at eight AM, and we have another one at Thursday. And, uh, that's in lieu of all the other conferences called that's been going on as well, we all, we all in this fight together, it's no big either, maybe use. We all wanna get on the other side of this and look forward to better days ahead. The, um, and saying that, uh, some of our employees, as you know, are out, and we. Ask that the general public would be a little patient with us, we, we have challenges every ten minutes or so about, uh, the lobby being closed. That's consistent across the parish, that's not just Simsport, it is consistent across the parish. Uh, we, we're, we're trying to stay healthy, just as well that the general public is trying to stay healthy, and so, help us help you. We really appreciate that. The, uh, Renee and, uh, Baysha's, uh, that's been here, big one fighting, and, uh, if I call, they'll come. If I call any of the other employees, they do the same thing, and so I wanna applaud, uh, applaud all of our employees. We're short staffed, but, uh, they're always ready and willing to do, uh, what's necessary to get us to the next level, or to get the job done, whatever that assignment might be. Also, I wanna applaud the police department, you know our situations already with our police department, and we made some adjustments. Having said that, uh, they're doing, they're doing the best they can with what they have, and I think they're doing a pretty good job, uh, under the circumstance. I wanna applaud, uh, all the building, police department, and, uh, Chief Jacob, and, and all the others in, in the street department, our entire town, we, we. Listen, we're, we're in a pandemic, we're in a crisis, and so we're in crisis mode, and we don't have time to complain. And criticize one another, let's work together, all do our part, until we get on the other side of this, and hopefully, we continue to work together. Just for the good of humanity, I think, uh, one good thing about this council is all of us have, uh, uh, have, uh, faith life, if you will. We're all a believer, so, just because we elected officials does not stop us from, from praying together. And praying for our country, our nations, and other political leaders, whether they're local, state, federal level, the case may be. Uh, we in territory that's uncharted, for, not just for some sort of halls of Louisiana, for America and the nations as whole. So, uh, let us keep that in mind, alright. I can always tell you all, don't sweat the small stuff, don't sweat it. Alright, anything else, anybody, uh, may have overlooked, uh, Alderman Turner?
I wanna say something.
Yes, sir.
I wish my daddy was an alderman for a hundred years.
Yeah.
And on a Friday the thirteenth, thirteen years ago, the day he died. And so, say y'all pray, I wish y'all would keep a man in a prayer.
Wow. Yes, I bless you, I know that's true, trust me. Thank you. Alright, I'm sorry, Alderman Bodenong.
I remember the prior, we, we had talked about this, uh, matter, but, uh, uh, they had an issue that came up. And it, it, it went viral on Facebook and everywhere about John Lemoine telling everybody if you been cut off, they, they war, and. And all this stuff, they didn't pay the bills, all this stuff, what is, what are we following right now? I know we talked about it in the beginning, with the governor and said about having some leniency with that, but. How are we dealing with that for people not paying their taxes?
Yeah, uh, there, there will be no disconnection until further notice. And, uh, we'll stick with that, and that's, uh, LMA, Louisiana Department of Social Security, we do, uh, under the Larson Act, as you know. Uh, until that change, I mean, we'll stay the course with that. Of course, we.
Yeah, yeah.
Still haven't paid their bill.
They, of course, let me be clear on that, in saying that, I'm just addressing the question I need, you should still have to.
Yeah, once the urgency's over, that's all different question to come up with right now.
See, so, so a lot of people got confused, because the Public Service Commission came out with a statement that, uh. No disconnects would, uh, occur from privately owned water companies, that's the Public Service Administration saying. We're not privately owned water company, we're a municipal water company, so we don't have to follow the Public Service Commission's guideline, but we have chosen to do so. Mayor, through executive order, has said that we're not gonna affect any disconnects or have any late fees for the time being, however. Under no circumstances are we to forgive any of these amounts due. They have to pay it.
Have to pay your bills, not you to give.
Yeah.
Your bills, that is.
You missing month, and you missing next month, you just wanna double up on it?
You cannot give away, uh.
Can't give away.
Yeah, you can't give away public resources. Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm making it clear.
I seen the issue ahead, and I, I knew it was a lie, because nobody gonna do that, they'll destroy them all day, you know?
Well, but, but here's another thing too, now, like, uh, Turner, the cool said, we have to keep in mind, we own our water, we have wells. And, uh, they're private contractors, so the nature of it is, is sort of different there.
It's different, but you get up and sneak, so, the, the money you make from water bills, from gas bills, from sewer bills. That's how this town, it used to operate, that, that's our income.
That's the cash cow.
Yeah, that's, that's our income, so, we can't go forever saying, to emergencies, I mean, just like a household needs income to come in. We need income to come in as well.
Exactly.
But, uh, we do understand the time, and like I said, so through executive order, the mayor issued that proclamation. To defer distance.
Alright, Ben, we're gonna update the, uh. The, the order that we have in place, uh, any questions about that? In fact, I got sidetracked there with my own thoughts there, we're at five o'clock, you know, the difference of, that I'm conscious of. Uh, our seventeen and unders are five PM at curfew, and it's, it's been working pretty good, of course.
You don't see too many walk.
You don't see too many walking, it's, it's been pretty good, dude, I, I, I have to commend them too, I'm sure they have a lot of. It would have been hard.
They cool, you might have seen three out there on the day, they were issued by twenty-five.
Yeah, so, for the most part, it's working, alright, having said that. So moved by Alderman Turner, two seconds, Alderman Marsh, second by Alderman Marsh, to adjourn, any questions, comments? Or questions, comments, all in favor? All, 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 close, eyes, eyes, nades, eyes happy.